Welcome everyone. I'd like to call this meeting on December 11th, 2017 to order. At this time Superintendent Jacoby Dale will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
This is one of the times in the board meeting when community members are allowed to address the board. There will also be a public hearing at the end of the meeting. Does anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this time?
Ms. President, I am a parent of a Roseville student. I've had, I have heard from the friend that Roseville Community Schools will be going for a bond this spring. What areas will the bond address?
That's a very good question. Our superintendent will be happy to outline and preside over that issue.
Thank you very much for bringing up this subject. I would like to ask our Deputy Superintendent, Mr. Alexander, to give us some details about the importance of the bond. If any board members have any questions or comments, please feel free to ask.
We plan to address four major areas of the bond. Technology, transportation, athletic facilities, and band equipment. Our current technology in the district is out of date and starting to break down. Buses are starting to become expensive due to the age of many buses in our fleet. Our athletic facilities at our schools are in need of massive renovations. Finally, our band equipment in our school is extremely old and needs to be replaced. Our communications and marketing facilitator, Mr. Dogland, can give you some information about how we are getting information about the bond out.
We have been getting information about the bond out by using social media, like Facebook, Twitter, and our district website. The district wants to keep the community as informed as possible. Many people cannot make the meetings, so this is a way to reach as many Roseville citizens as possible.
Trustee Holloway?
Madam President, could you share with the audience the date the bond goes to ballot for a vote?
Deputy Superintendent Alexander, can you answer that question?
Certainly. The vote will be at the beginning of May.
Trustee Smith?
Madam President, can you explain what is involved in this process when asking for a bond?
Deputy Superintendent Alexander, can you answer that question?
We are taking all the paperwork to Lansing this week on December 13th. The state will review the information and tell us how much money we can ask for in the bond. There are very specific guidelines that the state lays out for this. We are planning to ask for between fifty and sixty million dollars. We obtained information from our architecture firm to create this number.
Trustee Kavoniski?
Madam President, can you state some of the guidelines that go along with the bond?
Superintendent Dale, will you please provide us with some information about guidelines for a bond?
There are many parameters set for how and what we can spend the bond money on. Our Executive Director of Business and Finance, Ms. Mann, will give you further information about what can be asked for in a bond.
Bonds are similar to a mortgage and are required to be paid off in an allotted amount of time. The money to pay back the loan comes from taxes collected. None of the money can be used on teacher, support staff, or administrator salaries. We can only use the money for very specific things approved by the state. We are presenting those items, like Deputy Superintendent Alexander explained earlier, on December 13th. Our board attorney can explain the process of getting the bond on the ballot in May.
Mr. Attorney Jackson, do you have anything to add?
Yes. The state must approve all language that will be on the actual ballot that people will see in May. The state wants the district to provide wording that is clear and concise, and also which will assure that they will be easily understood by all citizens. This is something that we spent a lot of time on the craft.
Treasurer Frank?
Madam President, can you specify the type of technology we plan on asking for in the bond?
I will direct that question to our Director of Technology, Ms. Brooke Carrick.
We plan on upgrading all desktop computers for teachers in all of the schools. Comette Elementary is lucky enough to already have much of the technology we plan on putting in most of our other buildings, due to their school improvement grant. The bond we are proposing will also address updating of technology in future years. Once approved, technology will be replaced and/or updated in three phases. We must stay competitive with our neighboring districts, so up-to-date technology is essential. In addition, we want our students to be exposed to technology that they will encounter in the real world outside of school. This makes them the most competitive for jobs. Our Director of Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Neesele, can talk about technology that will address safety and security.
We will be replacing and upgrading many of the security features that we have in our schools. Many of them are currently out of date, making it difficult to repair. Additionally, we need more cameras at schools to help build, to help with blind spots. This will help our school be safer as we move into the future. At the high school, we have over one hundred entrance points. We need to be able to have eyes on all those locations.
Secretary Ferrante?
Madam President, I think all parents and students should be excited about all the technology updates coming our way with the potential bond. The second major area mentioned to be addressed was transportation. Please detail more information about that.
Absolutely. Our Coordinator of Transportation and Maintenance, Ms. McFarlane, can field those questions.
We are currently working with buses that are old and their repairs needed to assure safety are becoming very expensive. We bought used ones a couple of years back, but we need many more buses to replace aging ones. The new buses would require less maintenance.
Vice President Everett?
Madam President, after walking around our football field and track during the fall season, I saw many things that need to be addressed. Can you clarify what repairs will be made once the bond is approved?
Our Director of Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Neesele, can answer that question?
Our track has major compromises with cracks and in some spots cement is showing, which makes it unsafe for meets. The track is also only six lanes. To host track meets, you are required to have eight. We also would like to install a synthetic sports field. This will save money on watering year-round and provide a safe surface that doesn't need reciding every year. An artificial field would allow for multiple groups to use the field without worrying about destroying the surface.
Superintendent Dale, will any bond money be used to address the lack of bathrooms and distance of the concession stands?
We would like to address both those items with the bond. We are looking into how much that will cost. Our bond architects, Partners in Architecture, and Barton Malo, our construction management company, are working on this project and will present options that the board can decide on in the future.
Trustee Holloway?
Madam President, the last major area of the bond is band equipment. Please share with us information that will entail.
Our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Mr. Callaway, can answer that question?
We have gotten feedback from the music and band staff in the district to come up with the needs that must be addressed. Our band instruments at all levels are extremely old and falling apart. Many of these instruments are very expensive for our students to buy. We would like to continue to give our students opportunities for learning to play an instrument that interests them, and so many times, the school needs to provide that instrument.
Treasurer Frank?
Can someone please explain more about what is being done with food services related to the bond?
Certainly. Our Coordinator of Food Services, Mr. Leinberger, can provide more details.
The bond will allow for some updates to food services at various schools. For example, at the high school, we have hundreds of students moving through lunch lines in short periods of times. So we want to restructure the flow of services provided students with their food more quickly.
Trustee Smith?
Madam President, I would like to shift our discussion to some of the sacrifices our staff members had made, had to make in order to create the balanced budget for the start of the school year.
Superintendent Dale, can you explain more about that?
The state requires that every district keep a five percent fund balance in the district's general fund. Districts must find this fund balance, or there are repercussions from the state, which include district takeover. Assistant Superintendent Pikatowski can talk about some of the concessions staff members had to take to make this happen in our district.
All staff had to take furlough days, a pay reduction, and other reductions. We are extremely grateful and appreciative to the hard work our staff is doing. Their sacrifice has allowed us to continue to run our schools without, without state intervention.
Treasurer Frank?
Madam President, I think we are very lucky to have such an amazing staff in Roseville that consistently do what is best for students every day. Roseville Community Schools is grateful for all their work.
Our district hired many new teachers this school year. Assistant Superintendent Pikatowski, can you give us the names of our new teachers in the schools where they are teaching?
It's my pleasure to provide that information, Madam President. At Door Elementary, we have Carly Campbell. At Hero Park Elementary, we have Ashley Smith. At Kaiser Elementary, we have Nathan Benoit, Kathy Sinnoa, and Lauren Gritter. At Patton Elementary, we have Neil Miller. At Eastland Middle School, we have Michelle Anderson, Michelle Bissell, and Rachel Prano. At Roseville Middle School, we have Healthy Heather Hayen, and Angela Legatu, and then Danielle Nosie, and Brogan Rainey. At Roseville High School, we have Angela Kwikowski, Andrew LaFada, Victoria Seddick, and Lawrence Stanley.
Vice President Everett?
Madam President, I have heard that changes being implemented to the student seclusion and restraint procedures in schools is because of legislation in Lansing. What changes have been made?
Ms. Archibald, our Director of Special Education can explain more about, more about that because she has taken on that task.
In December of 2016, Michigan adopted new laws limiting the use of seclusion and restraint. The intent was to provide for a constant policy that, among other things, promotes the care, safety, welfare, and security of the school community and the dignity of each student. Roseville Community Schools has met the requirements of the law by providing awareness training to all employees having extended contact with students. The district has also provided the requirements, training in CPR, first aid, and nonviolent crisis prevention for identified key personnel in each building. When a student is secluded or restrained, the school is required to notify parents verbally and in writing.
Trustee Smith?
Madam President, may I get some explanation about what Roseville is doing to adhere to the updates?
Deputy Superintendent Alexander, would you please explain more about that?
To elaborate on that, all of our staff underwent training to address the many changes at the start of the school year. This includes teachers, secretaries, custodians, and lunchroom staff.
Thank you. If there are no other questions or comments at this time, we'll continue with the next agenda item. This is the second public hearing of the night. Does anyone wish to be heard at this time?
Ms. President, I'm a proud parent of a Roseville student. The other day, I was meeting with a friend of mine that has a son who attends another neighboring district. She mentioned some issues their district is facing with some new homeless transportation laws. Is this something Roseville Community Schools is facing at this time?
I'm going to direct that question to our Superintendent, Mr. Dale.
I would like to ask our Coordinator of Transportation and Maintenance, Ms. McFarlane, to give you details.
The current law requires students attending Roseville Community Schools that become or are homeless receive transportation to school at the district's expense. For example, a student that is staying at a shelter in any part of Macomb County has to be given transportation to Roseville and back home after school.
Now we're going to be going over nine things happening at this time. I'd like to call Mr. Blaskowski.
Let's give him a hand. Nice job. Now's the time of the evening at which these students get to recognize somebody that made a difference in their life here at Roseville. We have a wide variety of people here today to be recognized, and what I'd like them to do right now is I'd like them to stand behind their counterpart, up on the stage or behind the table.
Hello, everybody. The teacher I'm honoring is Mrs. Houghton. When I walked in as a freshman, Mrs. Houghton was one of the first teachers that made me think high school wasn't going to be so bad. I had her for English for about a month until she was gone for the rest of the trimester on maternity leave. I didn't have you for, or her for a teacher again until junior year when I decided to take drama. Ever since then, Mrs. Houghton has really been there for me, whether it was a life lesson or just cracking jokes in between classes. She's really made a difference in my academic life and personal life. Everything you have taught me from how to write a monologue to just being myself and knowing when the right time to have fun and goof off, uh, has stuck and always will. My favorite memory we have together is when we planned the three-on-three basketball tournament last year. I couldn't think of a better teacher to honor. When I found out you were teaching drama again this year, I was pretty sad, but I would know where to find you if I ever need to talk. Thank you for everything, Ms. Houghton. You really made a difference.
The teacher I'm honoring today is Mrs. Jordan. They say you don't know what you have until it's gone, and that seems to be the case in my relationship with Mrs. Jordan. During my junior year, I took AP comp, which is my first AP class, and had no clue what I was getting into. We had homework every day and long discussions in class, which I didn't care for too much at the time. Now, looking back as a senior, I realize everything she taught me was used to help benefit my education. Even if it was tedious at the time, she continued to help me, even as I went into my senior year, by letting me stay after class, after school in her class, to help me in my scholarship essays. Mrs. Jordan has truly made a difference and impacted my life. I know anyone who has her class would be able to say the same thing. If it wasn't for her, I wouldn't be the student I am today. Thank you.
All right. I'm Amanda Pikatowski, and today I'm honoring the most kind-hearted person I have ever met, Ms. Sarah Beeler. When I was told to pick a teacher, the first person that came to mind was you, without a doubt, and for so many different reasons. When I first met you, I was still a young girl walking into your third-grade classroom. You were still new at teaching, but nothing changed the fact that your smile lit up the whole room, and that you're still to this day one of the best teachers I have ever had, and you've taught me so much. You watched me grow, and even if you had things going on, you always made time for your Lincoln babies, and were always there to support and come around. To this day, I still remember you teaching me the difference between two, two, and two, and the excitement of social studies you gave me still sticks to me today. You taught me how to face my problems head-on, and you always reminded me how educated I was, and I'd go far in life. I also remember being your sixth-grade helper, which would be my favorite part of the day, coming down to help you and just to talk with you. Or even when I moved forward to middle school, I would stop by because it was something I enjoyed. But after all these long, hard years, and I would still have to say, no teacher has had a bigger influence on me than you, and I can only hope that after today, I have influenced you to never quit teaching. I also hope your kindergartners have the same feeling I did ten years ago, walking into your classroom, because with someone with as big of a heart as you, you deserve nothing but the world. Thank you again, Ms. Beeler, for everything.
Hello, I'm Candace. Today I'm honoring Derek Blackmore. I've met the greatest teachers throughout my high school career, but only a few of them stuck out to me. But when I got these papers to choose our teachers, you were first to come to mind. As a sophomore, I looked at my schedule clueless of what I was going to be doing this year. However, after being introduced to American history, I realized this was something I really enjoyed learning, learning about, and that's because of you. You made it something I looked forward to going to every day. You taught me to make sure, you taught to make sure students passed with fully understanding your class and to store that knowledge. You made me understand completely, and I appreciate you for that. Blackmore came, came to be someone I enjoyed being around, whether it was to talk about life, learn about American history, or playing phone charades. From American history sophomore year to now, I've had, I've, I've just had a bond with Blackmore ever since. I've gone to Blackmore for everything, whether it be just for advice or opinions on my outfits, since my friends like to judge. He is someone I look up to, someone I can go to for anything, someone I aspire to be, and he is the true definition of a mentor. He gave me the knowledge for my future life and ideas on what it is like, really like out there in the real world. Blackmore pushes me to do great things, and he's pushing me with his full potential to make me a successful person. One day in my junior year, I visited Mr. Blackmore when I was going through a rough patch, and he gave me this quote. Successful people have to do what they don't want to do when they don't want to do it with a positive attitude, and now I live by this. Ever since then, ever since then, if I'm ever in a bad mood, he makes me repeat this quote back to him, and with just that, I put a smile on my face. You have shaped me into who I am today and gave me the mindset that I have on life, and I will be sure to use your guidance after high school. Thank you so much for all you've done for me. I have nothing but respect for you and hope to see you in my future.
For all of you who don't know, this is Ms. Kitter. She wasn't one of my normal teachers, but what she taught me was... But what she taught me was even more important. From fourth to sixth grade, she was my teacher for Project Challenge. To get into Project Challenge, you have to be selected by looking at grades and then pass a test that was given. I remember walking to the library so afraid that, afraid that I wasn't going to get in. When I got accepted, I don't think any of us knew what we were getting into, because the first day, as we walked off of the bus, she was wearing a black cloak saying, "I have the plague." No one really recognized her either, so it was fun. Throughout the three years, we learned about medieval times, where if you weren't careful, you, you might end up underneath the table with your tongue cut off, to enormous entities which covered all the way from endangered animals to nursing, and finally to around the world, where I got to learn more about where I came from. One time, we took a trip to Chicago, where even though our bus broke down, it went smoothly besides that. We also got to eat with our hands at a joust and go to Shet Aquarium along with other activities. She taught me how to balance my time with normal schoolwork and the extra projects we did. I was never a big fan of reading, but I always enjoyed reading for Project Challenge because we played Quizlet after reading a certain amount of chapters. I still remember one of my favorite books I read there was Esperanz arising. One of my favorite things we always did there was the Minute Mysteries we did at the end of the class, that got us to think outside of the box. We always had fun, whether it was painting upside down, learning about different architecture, turning the classroom into medieval time village, learning about kiwi birds, or figuring out how to say words in Polish. We didn't have to do any of it. We weren't even graded on it, but it was, but we did it because not only was she teaching us valuable lessons, but she made, always made sure it was front. We only got to see her once a week, but believe me, that was the one thing that I looked forward to. I can never thank her enough for all she did for me and everyone else she taught. She always goes out of her way to make sure everything is special, and it is something I will truly never forget.
Hi, I'm Alaja, and this is Thomas Gus Wally. Through my journey at Roseville Community Schools, I have met many wonderful staff members, but one staff member has stood out that I've met when I began at Roseville High School. I didn't know schools had officers until I met Officer Gus Wally. He took the time out to look at my schedule and show me which way to go. He is a cool person. I've heard a lot of negative things about police officers growing up, but when I met Gus, he showed me otherwise. He cracked jokes and let me try his homemade food. It was good. He would let me know if I needed to pick a better crowd to hang around, and he's also a great person to talk to. It's nice to have someone that steer you in the right direction and show you the way to go. He inspired me to pursue a career as a police officer when I graduated from high school. Thank you, Gus, for all you've done and all you're doing.
Hi, I'm Sam Everett, and I would like to honor my second and eighth-grade teacher, Mr. Lang. He's a person I can not only call my teacher, but also a mentor and a friend. One of the memories I'm going to share is one I remember for years to come, and I, he knows which one I'm going to share. One day in second grade, Mr. Lang walked over to his desk, sat on it, and it instantly broke. He stood up, looked at the debris, a broken mug, some rolling marbles, many coffee puddles, and scattered papers, and without skipping a beat, he looked up and said, "I should really lay off the potato chips." Next, eighth grade rolls around, and I have Mr. Lang for science. I remember that I would always finish my work early, and he would be so impressed. But I also remember that Mr. Lang was someone I could go to and just talk and crack jokes with, and when he taught, I was intrigued and excited. He made science fun, and that's when I realized I wanted to be a scientist. He kick-started my dream and changed my life because of it. So thank you so much, Mr. Lang, for all you've done to make an incredible difference in my life.
Okay. I'm Miranda Rumpfelt, and this is kind of a story, might be a long one. So just think, high school, four years of your life where you will learn some of the most valuable lessons and make some of the most lucrative decisions, which will morph you into the adult that you'll be in the future. Kind of scary, right? Today, I'm honoring a teacher that made high school not so scary and helped me become the young woman I am today. In school, I've always been an outgoing student, and going into high school, I knew I wanted to be in as many clubs as I could and be a positive leader. I always knew I wanted to be a part of student assembly in high school, but I had no idea how big of an impact it would have on me. Out of my four years in student assembly, one teacher representative in specific honestly changed how I look at things in my life, and that is why I like to honor today. Ms. Chloe is the type of person who takes everything that comes at her, whether it's good or bad, and makes the best of it. As a high school student, I have been faced with many challenges, but I knew that I could always count on Ms. Chloe to talk me through a problem. No matter what the situation is, she can always help me see things from a different perspective and realize that nothing is too hard to overcome. The summer before my senior year, I had to make one of the biggest decisions of my high school career. My favorite part of RHS had parted, and I had to make the decision to stay at Roseville or to go to a different school. The countless hours of what I thought to do, what I thought I would do, I eventually decided to finish my high school career at RHS. My senior year has been very different and hard for me. Whenever I have a hard time adjusting to the changes, I know that I can always talk to Ms. Chloe in between classes. She has such a kind heart, and whenever she sees me, she asks how everything is going, which reminds me every day why I made this, why I made the decision that I did. It's the genuine teachers who love their jobs and want the best for their students and make RHS feel like home. So I want to thank Ms. Chloe from the bottom of my heart for making my senior year what it should be, for constantly reminding me to push myself to do my best, for inspiring me to take everything that comes my way and learn from it, and for helping me become the young woman I am today. Thank you.
Okay. All right. My name is Jacoby Dale, and today I'm honoring the most inspirational teacher I've had, Mrs. Schmollenberg. Mrs. Schmollenberg means more to me than just another good teacher I've had while at Roseville High School. She is like family to me. She has guided me throughout my high school experience, and I don't know where I would be without her. Since she became my teacher freshman year, we shared many lasting, long conversations about life. She's always made myself and her other students feel as if we're special and can do anything in life. Mrs. Schmollenberg has motivated me to strive for the best in, in not only school, but in life. I thank her for pushing me to get over my happy behavior and making me the better young man. You pushed me to my full potential because I was afraid to let you down. I know I'm not the only student who feels this way because you touch everyone in some way who has had you as a student. And I know whatever I choose to do in life, I can count on you to continue to guide and support me. I think of Mrs. Schmollenberg as another mom, and I love having her as a teacher, and I always love her how she has impacted my life, and I'm excited for my little brother to be born soon.
Hi. Tonight, I'm going to be honoring my soccer coach, Brad. Going into high school, I wasn't going to try out for any sports just because my past coaches ruining the love I had for those sports, but then I found soccer. Brad was the first person that came to my mind when we were picking people to honor. I'm so lucky that I get to honor Brad tonight. He is such a kind-hearted person, has done so much for the soccer program. He has taught me that we're more than just a team, we're a family. Doesn't matter if it's the boys' team or the girls' team, we're one big soccer family and support each other. I never thought I'd ever be good enough to make varsity, especially in my second year playing. My junior year, Brad pulled me aside and talked to me about being on his team. He told me I wouldn't play as much, but I get to learn from the girls. I'm so fortunate that he gave me that opportunity.
Okay, I'm Miranda Rumpfell, and this is kind of a story, might be a long one. So, just think, high school, four years of your life where you will learn some of the most valuable lessons and make some of the most lucrative decisions, which will morph you into the adult that you'll be in the future. Kind of scary, right? Today, I'm honoring a teacher that made high school not so scary and helped me become the young woman I am today. In school, I've always been an outgoing student, and going into high school, I knew I wanted to be in as many clubs as I could and be a positive leader. I always knew I wanted to be a part of student assembly in high school, but I had no idea how big of an impact it would have on me. Out of my four years in student assembly, one teacher representative in specific honestly changed how I look at things in my life, and that is why I like to honor today. Ms. Chloe is the type of person who takes everything that comes at her, whether it's good or bad, and makes the best of it. As a high school student, I have been faced with many challenges, but I knew that I could always count on Ms. Chloe to talk me through a problem. No matter what the situation is, she can always help me see things from a different perspective and realize that nothing is too hard to overcome. The summer before my senior year, I had to make one of the biggest decisions of my high school career. My favorite part of RHS had parted, and I had to make the decision to stay at Roseville or to go to a different school. The countless hours of what I thought to do, what I thought I would do, I eventually decided to finish my high school career at RHS. My senior year has been very different and hard for me. Whenever I have a hard time adjusting to the changes, I know that I can always talk to Ms. Chloe in between classes. She has such a kind heart, and whenever she sees me, she asks how everything is going, which reminds me every day why I made this, why I made the decision that I did. It's the genuine teachers who love their jobs and want the best for their students and make RHS feel like home. So, I want to thank Ms. Chloe from the bottom of my heart for making my senior year what it should be, for constantly reminding me to push myself to do my best, for inspiring me to take everything that comes my way and learn from it, and for helping me become the young woman I am today. Thank you.
Okay. All right. My name is Jacoby Dell, and today I'm honoring the most inspirational teacher I've had, Mrs. Schmollenberg. Mrs. Schmollenberg means more to me than just another good teacher I've had while at Roseville High School. She is like family to me. She has guided me throughout my high school experience, and I don't know where I would be without her. Since she became my teacher freshman year, we shared many last and long conversations about life. She's always made myself and her other students feel as if we're special and can do anything in life. Mrs. Schmollenberg has motivated me to strive for the best in, in not only school, but in life. I thank her for pushing me to get over my happy behavior and making me the better young man. You pushed me to my full potential because I was afraid to let you down. I know I'm not the only student who feels this way because you touch everyone in some way who has had you as a student. And I know whatever I choose to do in life, I can count on you to continue to guide and support me. I think Ms. Schmollenberg is another mom, and I love having her as a teacher, and I always love for how she has impacted my life, and I'm excited for my little brother to be born soon.
Hi, um, tonight I'm going to be honoring my soccer coach, Brad. Going into high school, I wasn't going to try out for any sports just because my past coaches ruining the love I had for those sports, but then I found soccer. Brad was the first person that came to my mind when we were picking people to honor. I'm so lucky that I get to honor Brad tonight. He is such a kind-hearted person, has done so much for the soccer program. He has taught me that we're more than just a team, we're a family. Doesn't matter if it's the boys' team or the girls' team, we're one big soccer family and support each other. I never thought I'd ever be good enough to make varsity, especially in my second year playing. My junior year, Brad pulled me aside and talked to me about being on his team. He told me I wouldn't play as much, but I get to learn from the girls. I'm so fortunate that he gave me that opportunity because I learned so much. He has taught me more than just soccer. He taught me how to be a better person in life. When I said I can't, you said I could. When I said I won't, you said do it. When I said I fail, you said well done. When I said I don't believe in myself, you said I believe in you. Thank you for pushing me to be the best, the best I can be, especially in those times when I was closest to giving up. Thank you for being the best coach I've ever had. You're my ultimate source of inspiration.
Can you guys hear me? My name is Damon Frank. Tonight, I'll be honoring the best coach I ever had, my football coach, Mike Mayhar. Coach Mayhar is a great coach as well as a great role model. He taught me a lot on and off the field. He had a big impact on me to become the young man, young man I am today. As a coach, he gave me the chance. Most varsity coaches won't give a five, seven hundred twenty pound kid. A starring spot, I was blessed to receive on his football team. As a person, he taught me how to be a hard worker and put others before myself. I honor Coach Mayhar today because he was truly a person you could call for help at any time. He's helped me a lot, he's helped me through a lot of struggles, and I truly appreciate him for that. Although he has only been my coach for one year, he has had a much bigger impact on my life than any coach I ever had. He pushed me to be my best at every aspect in life, whether it's on the field or in the classroom, and I love him for that. Coach Mayhar, I am truly grateful for you, and thank you for everything you've done. I hope you can continue to impact other people's lives the way you impacted mine. Thank you for everything.
Crap. Okay, um, my name is Zane Alexander. Uh, today I'll be honoring my middle school teacher, Brenda Baker. Uh, Ms. Baker was not only a teacher for me, but a friend. I could depend on her if I needed her in the classroom or out. I got close with Ms. Baker in sixth grade when I had history, and she was kind of like my school mom. I would visit her even if I didn't have class with her, and sometimes on special occasion, occasions, surprise her with some Reese's since it was her favorite candy. One of my many great memories I have with her is when I couldn't go on the boating trip with my class because I was going to Disney World, which wasn't a bad substitute, but I really wanted to go on the boat and eat some hot dogs, since hot dogs are one of my favorite foods. So, Ms. Baker made a promise with me that her and her husband would come into class and make the whole class hot dogs when I got back. I made sure she kept her promise, and two weeks later, she, she fulfilled it, probably because I wouldn't stop bugging her about it. But regardless of the fact, Ms. Baker has and always will be my favorite teacher I've ever had. I'll never go over your love for Reese's and your paper fringes that you hate. You'll always be a longtime friend. I hope to keep in contact with you in the future.
Just a fair warning, I'm a crybaby, so uh, I'm gonna cry. Okay. Growing up as a child, I always was searching for a role model, someone who I could look up to endlessly and who would never let me down. As a junior, I walked into my childcare class, which I was so excited to take, and I saw a little blonde lady sitting at her desk with a stern face. Little did I know, I was finally looking at that role model. I wasn't so sure about this woman at first, but over time, I gained trust for her. Mrs. D has always pushed me to do my best. When I mess up, she doesn't cower to me and make excuses for me. She tells me that I'm wrong and to make the situation right. She makes sure that I excel in all of my classes and never lets me forget that my academic success comes first. She has inspired me to always be the bigger person and to be a focused young lady instead of a wild little girl. After years of being confused of what career path I wanted to take, Mrs. D and her childcare class helped me to realize my purpose is to be an educator. If I'm lucky, I'm sorry. If I'm lucky, I will be half the educator this wonderful woman is. Mrs. D is a woman of truth, a woman of care, a woman of class, a woman full of heart. I will forever be grateful for her and the fact that I felt a lifetime friend.
Hi, I'm Katrina Archibald, and... I think he got me worked up because he got, he kept telling me he was gonna cry, so...
Today, I've decided to honor my teacher, Mr. Madison, because he is not only an amazing teacher, but an amazing person all around. It all started last year when Mr. Madison repeatedly asked me to take his Media One class. I was a little hesitant to take it because Media One wasn't really a class that I was interested in. I decided to take it anyway, and it, and I ended up really enjoying it, not just because I liked making the videos, but because I enjoyed having him as a teacher. Taking Media was honestly one of the best decisions that I have made in high school. Mr. Madison has helped me in so many ways over the past year, and I can't thank him enough. Mr. Madison is someone I know I can always go to for help, and is someone I know I can trust. I know that he would never judge me or the decisions that I make, but he would give me his honest opinion. He is always pushing me to be the best that I can be in school and out. Mr. Madison is someone who always looks for the good in people no matter what. I know that even if he is having a bad day, he comes to class with a smile on his face and is ready to get to work. Mr. Madison cares a lot about his students. He's the type of person who will stop what he's doing, no, even if it's really important, just to help a student. He doesn't just think of us as students, but as part of his family, and I love that.
All right. So, I met Mr. Ronowski my junior year, you know, and chemistry was never my strong suit, but he always made it a fun class. He'd always push me through to get through class, do my work. If I did bad on a test, he'd sit down with me and help me learn how to do everything the right way, and that's what made him a great teacher and a great guy. He always tried to make his class fun with some kind of experiment. He would always make sure everybody knew what they were doing and with a positive attitude. He would always have a positive attitude in his, in his class and in his halls, and it always contributed to a comfortable atmosphere to be in. It made class much easier to learn in for me. One day in class, he came with a black eye, which avalanched into a lot of jokes about him being into a fight club. This is what made him a cool teacher, because he, he started off getting hurt about it, he would joke around about it with us. And he really got it from basketball, but we all know the truth thing about that, but uh, yeah. Thankful for him. He helped me get through my junior year of chemistry, which was a hard point in time for me, but uh, yeah, that's it.
Oh, is it on? Okay. All right, so first hello, my name is Chris Callaway. I had this wonderful lady before you miss service as my seventh and eighth grade teacher. I'd like to honor her today for being a driving force for me to become a Roseville Panther. Many do not know this, but Roseville was not my first original choice of schooling. I had felt that I could talk to her about anything, so I explained to her my concerns. She told me that I could be the change, I could have, and I could have a positive impact on Roseville. In middle school, she believed, la la la, okay, hold up. In middle school, believe it or not, I wasn't the outgoing kid that I am today. But she wrote me a letter at the end of my eighth grade year that changed my life. I'll read it to you. It says, "Christian, even though I am sad to see you go, I am so sad, I'm so excited for you to move up into the high school. You are an amazing young man and probably the most caring and kind person I've ever met. Your parents should be proud to have raised you. I cannot wait to find out what you do in your future. You can do anything you put your mind to. I'm also glad to have you in the class the past couple of years. You'll be unforgettable. Please come back and visit and let me know how you are doing at the high school, hopefully Roseville. I'll miss you, Miss Service."
Hold up, stop that.
And reading that, it almost brought to her smiles. She, she explained to me the importance of finding, in her words, the right cheese, and not being afraid of change because it can be for the better. You've inspired me to be the best, the best me possible and to never quit until I found, to find the right cheese. And that cheese I've seen is Roseville High School. You've always believed in me and believed I could do anything I put my mind to. I'm extremely thankful for you and grateful for you, and hope you continue to affect the other lives of children as much as you've done mine. Thank you.
I chose Ms. Rossin to honor tonight because I've had the most connection with her, not only because I've had her as my teacher for eighteen times, but because she's taught me so much, as teachers should do. But most teachers will just teach their given subject. Not many will go out of their way to create a bond with you and teach you about life. Personally, I'm one of those kids who has a harder time opening up to adults. I'll talk to them, but never really say what's in my mind because I feel like a lot of times they don't understand what we have to say. They are harder for me to relate to. Ms. Rossin is my exception. I could tell her everything. I could tell her things I couldn't even trust to tell my friends. She would never judge me. She would just listen to me and try to help me because that's the kind of person she is. I can tell that she really loves us and she really loves the subject that she teaches, and that's helped me love art too. As a teacher, she knows how to help every type of person, anywhere between the kid that maybe was forced into an art class to graduate, and the kids like me who genuinely love art. She made me a better artist. When you're grading art, it's a tricky task to accomplish without hurting someone's feelings, but she always managed. She challenged me, and when I was struggling, she'd help me. Even when I turned in pieces I thought were inadequate, she'd still put the effort to compliment things she liked about it and help me by telling me things I could do better next time. It's the perfect balance, and it's exactly what I needed. Ms. Rossin changed my life, and one of the deepest sadnesses I'll have in graduating Roseville High School will not being, will not be being able to see her every day or not being able to see, to have her class again. I would even willingly do an Elements and Principles of Design worksheet again and again, even though I've already done it eighteen times, if it meant I was able to take you to Grand Valley with me. Thank you, Ms. Rossin, for everything you do for me and everything you'll continue to do with your current and future students to make Roseville High School a better place and a place where students will, can achieve their full potential.
My name is Brooke Herrick, and today I have the opportunity to honor one of the most kind-hearted and best teachers I have ever had, Ms. Earl. I'm so happy that I get the chance to represent such an amazing woman who would always put her students first. You weren't just my speech therapist, you were my friend and my teacher. When I was in elementary, my favorite days were when I got to see you and just spend time with you in your office. As you helped me learn how to speak properly, I would get a smile on my face every day when you would walk in my class and call my name, mostly because I would get out of class for a little while, but when I look back, it was my favorite time because I was with someone who cared and put their all into me. You would always put so much extra time and money into your students to make sure they were doing the best of their ability. You were always the person I would come to you, come to with all my problems, because you were always the person I trusted most, sometimes even more my own mother. You have made such a positive impact in my life and taught me mostly how to never give up on myself. Even when I was frustrated and ready to throw everything away and give up, still to this day, I would look back on when I would just come to you and visit your office and sit there for an hour just talking about anything and everything. When I knew I was going to be on Mark's school board, the first person who popped in my head was you, the most influential teacher I've ever had. You deserve to be represented to know how much you have impacted a student's life, not only to pronounce the words properly, but about life and how to grow up. The hardest thing about leaving here on Park was leaving my favorite person in that school. You were a teacher that I never forgot and never will. You deserve the absolute best in this world, and I'm so honored that I get the chance to represent such an amazing woman. Thank you.
Hey, I am honoring one of the most inspirational teachers I've ever had while in attendance at Roseville High School, Mr. Matthew Camarowski. He's an amazing teacher. When I had him, he was very funny and super cool. He would always talk to me on a friend level, never like he was a teacher and I was a student. He would also tell me how bright my future was and how bright it could be, and this pushed me to do great things. I'm honored to have picked such an amazing person for my teacher.
I feel really good about America, listening to you. As good as I feel, you and the audience probably even feel better because you're related to them. One of the things that we need to do is give you some recognition. As we go down the aisles across, students, can you identify who's with you, your brother, sister, parents, grandparents, or whoever is here with you? Come on.
So, my mom, she works here, and she hit her back thirty, so she dropped me off, but she's here with me.
My mom and dad are here, and my boyfriend Vic is here.
My mom and dad are here with me.
Uh, my mom and dad. My father, William.
My mom and my little sister are here.
My mom, Margaret, right there. And my dad, right there, Ken. Kenneth. My mom, Carrie Potter. My mom, Sherry, and my dad, Walter.
Walter Mullen.
My mom, Adila, and my grandma, Ruth Green.
My biological parents, Heather Everett and Scott Everett, my sister Isabella. So, I have about a whole row. Uh, my dad and my mom are here, and then my grandma Lilian, my grandma Mary, and my aunt Glenys are here.
Uh, my mom, Linda.
Um, my mom, Rhonda, in the blue shirt, and my dad, Larry, and then my sister, Leah.
Well, my mom and dad, they're not here, so Ms. Linda, I love you. Ms. Alexander, Mr. Alexander. Thank you, guys. I have Ms. Baker.
Uh, my father, Alan, and my beautiful mom, Crystal.
Um, my mom couldn't make it tonight, but I have Ms. D, I have Mr. D, and then I have Chris's mom.
Now, we'll just have some comments from the Board of Education members and superintendent. First, we'll be starting with Damon Frank.
Um, well, I had a script out, but I'm just gonna go off the top of my head because I feel like it'll be more meaningful. But um, well, my person I was supposed to job shadow, Mr. McCartney, he had an actual job, but we had a short conversation at lunch, so yeah, we had a good talk. And um, but anyway, to the rest of the board members, thank you, guys, for everything. I had a great day, and you guys are really unappreciated, unappreciated to the, like, community, and yeah, I appreciate you, guys. You guys do a lot for us. Thank you, guys.
Now, we'll have Jamie Frante.
Um, today, I honored Mr. D. Felipe, not, whatever. Um, um, and I learned that being a part of the school board, it's not easy, and they don't get as much credit, credit as they deserve, and I'd like to say thank you for the breakfast and the lunch that they gave to us, and it was really nice, and I enjoyed being a part of this today.
Candace Smith.
I wrote a little thing because earlier, it was just bad. I want to thank Mr. Lefee for giving me the opportunity to participate in today. I want, I want to thank the board for making this an educational but very enjoying day for me. Also, thank you for the laughs from, from the corrections earlier, from madame to madam to madam during the rehearsal. I learned a lot about the bond that I didn't know existed, and I believe it could help get the involvement at the sports and performing arts, um, yeah, that we talked about earlier. We had an interesting bus ride and interesting talks at lunch today. So, yeah, thank you.
Kaitlyn Kataliski.
Um, I'd like to thank the board for teaching me more about the school board and how it works and for listening to us as people and not as students. I'd like to thank the school for providing us with breakfast and the never-ending lunch that we had at Outback. And then lastly, I'd like to thank Mr. Lafitte for giving me this opportunity to do this because it was a great experience and it was better than being in school.
Alicia Holloway.
First, I'd like to say I'm honored to be here right now because last year I came with my grandma to just to watch it, and I was like, Grandma, I want to do that. And then I'm here today and I'm her, so like, it's just, it's great. And then I would like to thank the board members for all they do, and thank you for the food.
Samantha Everett.
I just want to say that I am very honored to be sitting here today and representing Mrs. Winawski and just how, um, I just want to thank all the board members because you guys, you guys make a difference in the school and you are underappreciated, and you do so much, and you get nothing, like, barely anything in return, so... When I see you guys come to like concerts and like games and stuff like that, it really means a lot, not just to me, but I know a lot of other students as well because it shows that you guys really care and you guys are really involved in the school that you guys represent, so thank you guys so much.
Jacobi Dell.
I would first like to thank everyone for coming out tonight and supporting us. I would next like to thank all the board members and administrators for showing us around and giving us such a memorable experience. You guys do so much for our community, and I'm grateful for all of you. I would like to thank Mr. Kement for being such a great counterpart today and teaching me what this job entails and talking to me about my life and my future. I'd like to shout out my mom again for always supporting me. Love you.
Zain Alexander.
Uh, thank you to Deputy Superintendent Blaskowski for showing me a day in his job and for teaching me more about the board. Thank you, Mr. Lafitte and Ms. Martz, for giving me the opportunity to be on the school board. And thank you for the school board for everything that you do for the students. You guys don't really get, uh, like, much appreciation. You guys should be given more respect, definitely. You guys don't do this for money, you guys do it for the kids. Uh, also, everybody needs to go out and vote on the bond.
Kai Aman.
First, I'd like to thank all members of the school board. You guys really do it for the kids, and it like showed today, like, talking to us. You guys are all amazing people. Then I'd like to thank Ms. Diane Cott. She's, so I'm talking to her for hours. I can tell she's such a classy and smart lady. And we talked about my future a lot, and that helped, and she told me about her job. I'd like to thank all Roseville Community Schools staff members. A lot of you here I have like really good relationships with, like, basically all the teachers that were just honored. So I'd like to thank you guys for doing your job and caring about all the kids. Yeah, um, this was a memorable day for me. I'm a student who wants to come back and teach in Roseville, so this was a really edu... So this was a really memorable day for me, and everybody get out there and vote for the bond.
Amanda Pikatowski.
I would like to thank the school board and Mr. Lafitte for giving me this opportunity to do this today. And I would like to thank Mr. Hedmark. I learned a lot on what he does every day. Um, I'd like to thank Outback and everyone, and Breakfast because it was delicious. Thank you. And... What's with the snow day tomorrow? Thank you, everyone.
Christian Daxson.
I would like to thank the school board for the chance they gave me today. It was also fun getting to know about a bond that could potentially help the school and the kids of the future of the community. I also had a very nice time today, hanging out with amazing friends, um, staff members, and the board members today. Thank you.
Austin Nisa.
I'd just like to thank everybody on the board for this educational opportunity, for everything that goes on in the school district. Thank you, Mr. Lafitte. At lunch, I had a nice conversation with Mr. Turkin and Mr. Frontera. Uh, also, finally, I'd like to thank Mr. Steenland for everything. It was an honor to serve his reputation. Yeah, that's about it.
Noah Dodlin.
I would like to thank Mr. Lafitte and the school board for this amazing experience. Um, honestly, they all have this job for one reason. It's not for money, it's for the kids. Every board meeting, they only pay thirty dollars, and they have two a month. And they're really underappreciated, and I would like to say how much I appreciate them.
Brooke Carrick.
I'd want to say thank you, um, for the influence, for showing me what he does and talking about how it did, they go down and how they got where he is now and that you really don't have to have everything figured out to go to college and go on a flight. Um, but I would thank you, Mr. Lafitte, for standing there and, and you all four members because you really deserve big shout-outs, and thank you for everything you do for the school and for the children. And yeah, thank you.
Madison McFarland.
I would like to thank the board members and Mr. Lafitte for giving me this amazing opportunity. And I would like to thank Joe Smith for joining his job for the day. He's actually very fun. And I also would like to thank you guys for educating me about the bond. I actually found my background a lot about it, but I just realized that it could really impact me as like a media student or future media student because a lot of our technology is crashing. It's not going to anymore, so please vote for the bond.
Christian Callaway.
Uh, first, I want to say thank the board members. Uh, thank you to Mr. David Rice for showing me my job as director of Pickle Room, and he gave me a fair output on what his job is and my future in college. Thank you to Mr. Steenland for the great tour. Also, I'm a learner who is in first grade, so I know who Mr. Fronter.
Michael Lambert, okay, go.
We're talking with services and how today, you know, you don't like your food, you can talk to lunch ladies. I never knew that till today.
What'd he say? You can talk to lunch ladies?
I just want to say, it was a great day to learn about how the school system works, and I'm thankful for the opportunity to be on the Mark's School Board and that the board gave us this because it is a good thing to learn and a good thing to be on. It is educational, I just want to say something today.
Katrina Archimboldt.
First of all, I want to thank the board for everything that they do for our school. And I'd pretty much like to thank everyone who works with us together. It's really been a great experience. And lastly, I'd like to thank Mr. Teresa Amala for teaching me about the things she does as director of special education. She is a lot for it, and it's a hard job, so I'm very grateful.
Okay, so I would like to thank the Board of Education, Mr. Lafitte, Ms. Martz, and everyone else that made this day possible. It was really cool to see how much the board and everyone who works in this building does to keep all the schools in Roseville running their best. A special thank you to Teresa Janey. I have known you for most of my life through Roseville Community Schools, but I truly love how you put your heart into this community, and it's leaders like you who make Roseville such a nice and comforting district to be a part of. I'm so glad I was able to represent you today, and thank you again for everyone here for coming and your endless support. Okay, so now all I need is a motion for adjournment.
I, Sam Everett, make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
I need a second.
I, Kaitlyn Kataliski, second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
S.